Same as your lines have set up for minutes.
Jody should be able to...
Well, stand by, Jody.
This is a Zoom conference, so she would have to use the... She would have to use the link to the Zoom conference to dial in for the... There's a phone number associated with it. So she should be able to dial that number and be able to hear it now and clear.
There's no link for meeting, it's only for each candidate that she's going to dial.
Okay, and did they receive the phone number also? Okay, I'm gonna do this just for a second. I apologize for the delays.
Just when we think we've got it, how about...
I don't think we have enough to do that.
How about mine? I take mine?
It's not all I'm going to reach. And that's all we've got right there, so I'll get you to move there.
Okay.
Jody, please say something.
Yes, hello.
All right, don't anyone touch that. And Patty, would you like to move there, that way you can...
My recording.
It's running though, right?
Yeah.
Jody, can you hear us? Ms. Shirley, can you hear us?
Jody.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm muted because I'm in my car.
No worries, no worries. All right. It's now 5:02 PM, July 18th, and the special council meeting will come to order. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the five United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What point of order? Did you say July 18th?
I did.
I think it's the 19th.
Is today the 19th?
Yes.
Okay, well, it's now the 19th. Ms. Jantry, would you please call the...
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you very much. This evening, we are conducting interviews with four candidates for the city manager position. Each candidate will be interviewed for 20 minutes, followed by a 10-minute council discussion about that candidate. After all candidate time cycles are completed, we will take a five-minute break, then resume discussions to vote for two candidates. Earlier today, we all received an email from City Attorney Mora concerning do's and don'ts and sample questions. Mr. Mora, would you like to give a brief summary of the do's and don'ts?
Sure, just very, very briefly. To be clear, I did provide some sample questions. You are in no way bound by those questions. They were offered as a suggestion if some members have not had the opportunity to interview a public official. In best practices, it's often advised that your questions be consistent so that you can consistently compare the responses you received. Again, that is at your discretion as each of you individually proceed with this. As a general reminder, as you take notes, those notes may be public records. As you take notes on the candidates, be mindful of that. That's not an admonition not to, just a reminder. And also, as far as the aims of this, your questions should be targeted at the individual skills, not their views, beliefs, personal lives, unless those are beliefs that are very specific to the role, like, "I believe in the management style of X", as opposed to, you know, "I believe this party is a better political party", or something of the sort. This is a political job in that respect, and so we're not looking for those kinds of questions. Somebody's family life and other similar questions are not relevant to this inquiry, and I would advise you to stay away from those and target more the person's professional capacity to perform the role that you intend to hire them for.
Thank you very much. We have about four minutes until the first interview is scheduled to begin. During that time, I'll take questions or comments from the council concerning the interview.
How are we gonna rotate through it? Is it like one question per...
Yeah, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna... First off, we know it's a 20-minute interview, and what we're gonna do is do a brief introduction with the candidate, and then we will immediately proceed into questions from the council. And we will just start on this side or that side and rotate around until everyone has asked a question, and we'll continue doing that until the very end of the interview. And that's really about it.
He's got time at the beginning to kind of introduce himself.
That's what I... Basically, I'm gonna ask him to give a brief introduction. So I think that should be sufficient. Yes, sir.
Let's say, for example, we have three of the four that just knock it out of the park. Because they're gonna be, hopefully, and will have the opportunity to say, "Hey, we want to interview three, it's two in concrete."
You... You know, I considered that, and it sort of defeats the purpose. And I also believe that there's only gonna be two top candidates. And so there could be possibly a third if there was a tie, but I think generally what happens is we take another vote to see if we can narrow it down. At the end of the first vote, I think we'll clearly see two winners, but then again, we can always change.
Okay.
I will definitely consider that if it looks like it's a tie across three equal candidates.
Who would be the backup plan then? If you take the top two, offer them jobs, and you take them past? Who's the backup?
Well, I think the plan at this point is we take the top two, and we ask them to come back next week for in-person interviews. And that's where we'll be able to spend more time with them, and they'll also be able to ask us questions. And at that time, I think that we can be comfortable with the candidate, would be my thoughts. But there has to be someone that we select, and hopefully, the best candidate is still interested in us.
But if the first two that we pick vote saying no for whatever reason, would we be able to go back to the other two?
You know, that's not a bad idea. If we have the top three, and one of them drops out, maybe we should hold the third one in as the backup. I'd like to have two people to interview next week. And you all right with that?
My advice to you, having done this process with other councils, is eat the elephant. And the only way to do that is one bite at a time. So go through your process tonight as best you can. It's good to have an eye towards the various possibilities and probabilities, but your hand may... You may say, "We're gonna revert to our third", and your third may go on the record saying, "If I'm not in your top two, I'm not interested". And so having those plans, you know, it's good to have an idea, but I think it's better to... I would advise you to be a little more fluid and go with what your intention is at this time, and then if we need to adapt, we can adapt accordingly. Ultimately, this is your process. The council is charged with hiring the manager, and so you folks will be at the helm of that.
At the end of this, I'd like everyone on this council to be comfortable with the final decision and feel like it was a fair process. That being said, let's zoom here. I think it's time. See, basically, what I'm looking at, we don't have the candidate online.
It doesn't look like it. I have a panelist, too, and attendee zero. So panelists is...
Who's the candidate?
And Councilmember Shirley.
Can I ask, Britton? Can we give the candidate a call and make sure that he's logged in or that we're logged into the correct conference?
We're logged in there, we're logged in, what do you do?
Have that these phones with the...
Go on. Whoops.
Hey, yes. Hey, present, this is Mayor Miller Beach. We expect you to be on Zoom conference. Are you trying to log in?
The yellow green. That's what the president does, he sits in the back row of the talk. You're the captain's general.
I played early, played twice.
You'd have the generals, and then the sixes in the talk, and then you had Casey and Patrice, you know, the next girl. He was always like, "Pass it, Anderson, Anderson". That's a rare reason. That and the... There's a continuing war of laser pointers. It was kind of an arms race. And we didn't get the biggest, badest, different color of gun. I had a green one, I bought. That was, that was coming here. In fact, I never got it back. They were the green lasers, like, for the... General. Patrice, he's red, that color. This is a green, so he comes out of nowhere. Oh, this is... Patrice, oh, no. Where'd you get that? Also, the age of that. Next meeting. Fewer green ones, and then all of a sudden, you know, purple one pops up. Yes. The power of the studio, sorry. Neo, new fiber, high-power laser pointer. But the green one actually works pretty good. We're actually, like, yeah. Red, kind of balanced for something equal, that's his awful name. You know, what do you play in that? Purple is a little birdy. Oh, yeah. But that purple, you know, like, everybody has, you know, laser in at that point. I want one, like, uh... Not telling anybody. Push up the presentation, you know, see, red, you can just go and track this guy. Okay. It's not the US girls, you know what happens? What's gonna like about him, there, he's very technical, he's too... We should give him mileage. I think, yeah, these are tech, they're tech, they're tech guys. Hey, my machine's gone. You can try to turn it on and off. Kind of hate that one. After a while, I got a mortgage at RTI, if I might.
Will you please, um, sugar me?
Oh, absolutely. I just, I just need some sugar, I'm not much of a sugar lover, thanks. I mean, it's not that much, but it's...
Pure sugar, probably, pretty much.
Okay, you have a winter break, white sugar, sure. Let's start moving. Well, I'm worried about... What we need is a orange juice, just in case.
We have... I'm thinking this, like, we're gonna answer the cell phone today.
Don't lock that angle. Open things, we can... Lock them for this room.
We need to be front here, then we want some building.
Maybe I'll sponsor.
What was the suggestion?
My question to him was, "How far are we going to the scale?" So far, we weren't taking, we're putting it in the air, so we just moved, waiting for something. Get back to the scale.
Guy like his idea. Does he have something later? Unless he has something later tonight. I'm sure he does.
Mr. Britton, I just sent you an email. Okay, let's see if you can connect. I would have to do it, because I have an email for Shirley. I just wanna make sure they work, and then what was... Because we have a tight schedule. Now, if this does not work, remember, we can come back to this Zoom. We will... We'll do a telephone. Telephone meetings. Okay, Derek, you should see your phone number on this, but you should just call that.
Not a good start.
Happens. Guys, if we can refrain from any sidebars until we're back fully on the record.
Give me your email. Oh, yeah, probably, so, that's right. Okay, so here's what we're gonna do. I'm gonna move you to the end of the interview session. We'll be... Excellent, yeah. We're just gonna call you directly in the opportunity. All right, thank you very much. You're very welcome. What we're gonna do is we're gonna do a telephone call at the end of the rotation and get Mr. Britton back in.
I'm sorry, you didn't say?
Well, I didn't wanna... I didn't wanna take time away from what he did. He just was my old dear, I don't think he's ever used. Would be my guess. In the meantime, we have a few more minutes. So what I would advise everyone to do is do what you're doing right now in this research of candidates, and we'll take us back in about eight minutes. I apologize for the technical difficulties. Occasionally, this happens.
Mayor, can I stop the recordings while we're out of session? Thank you.
I would advise each of you to refrain from any council business discussions.
And you said let him in as soon as he gets here? He's here?
I believe he's online now. The next candidate is Mr. Peter Cavalli. She was asking, she... Oh, yes. Hello, everybody. Hello, Mr. Cavalli. Welcome, and thank you for joining us. Hi, I'm Dave Gaddis, Mayor of Beller Beach, and it's very nice to meet you. Would you like to... Would you like to start out by giving us a brief introduction for the council?
Absolutely, my name's Pete Cabal. I don't know if you remember, I know Mr. Nataro does. I worked for the city of Beller Beach back in 2005 to 2010. So I feel very comfortable talking about about the city. My background also, I was the city manager of Kennet City for the last 10 months or so. I had left just a little while ago, just June 26th. Before that, I was working at Pinellas Technical College, the Public Works Academy, doing a lot of training for our local government. Public works, emergency management, things like that. Before that, I was working at Beller Beach and before that, I was over at the city of Sandy Beach. So very familiar with Pinellas County, especially, you know, central Pinellas down to the southern tip.
Thank you very much. All council members have prepared questions for you, so if you're ready, let's begin. As I call, as I call on each council member, please introduce yourself to Mr. Cabal. We'll start right here with Mr. Roberts.
Hello, Pete, my name's Lloyd Roberts. Is Pete okay? Here you go by Peter.
Oh, absolutely, Pete.
Okay. So it looks like you've got some experience in public works, hands-on, as well as some teaching experience. If you could take a minute or two to share with us one of the, what you feel is one of the most successful public works projects that you've had an opportunity to work with? And why you think it was successful?
Okay, well, obviously, there's been lots of public works. Excuse me, one second. I'm sorry, I didn't know why my video was off. Okay, so one of the public works projects I really enjoy doing right there in Beller Beach is actually working on a lot of the sand dunes in the area. And not just working on the sand dunes, you know, for aesthetics, but actually working with folks like the Audubon Society, the Clearwater Marine Aquarium. All those agencies to make some of your sand dunes the most biodiverse sand dunes, or at least when I was working there, that's what we had done a lot of notoriety for. Related to that also, as part of, if I remember correctly, I forget if it was one or two beach re-nourishment projects in Beller Beach. And it was either one in Beller Beach and two in Sandy Beach, I think that was the way it was, or the other way around. And I really enjoyed that, again, providing erosion protection, protecting against storm events, things like that, as well as just having a beautiful environment for our residents to be able to walk around and enjoy.
Okay, just a follow-up, so what type of agencies do you have to work with with the beach restoration?
Yeah, when I worked with the beach restoration, our local contact was Nicole Elko. I don't know if anybody remembers her name, she used to be the coastal manager for Pinellas County. Related to that, we worked with the state, the State Department of Department of Protection. We worked with the Department of Engineers. Again, it was, it was, a lot of people come together to make a project like that happen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Brink. Thanks for attending, Mr. Pete, my name's Frank Backer, the councilman. You wouldn't want other candidate have the most diverse experience of Beller Beach. Why do you feel that you would be the best candidate for Beller Beach?
I guess one of the things that I feel like I'm pretty strong with, I have a lot of connections in the local area. Through Pinellas County, through the state of Florida. And also, I could bring, I could bring volunteers. I worked with several of the nonprofits in the area. I have a proven history of working with Keep Pinellas Beautiful. We've done things like litter surveys in the area. We volunteer decide to do coastal cleanups. I have pretty, I still have very tight ties to Pinellas Technical College and you bring volunteers, interns, things like that to assist. Also, like I said, I've spent quite a bit of time, we spent about five and, I think about five and a half years in Beller Beach. And still even talk to some of the residents out there.
All right, just one follow-up, you said you left your last job the other June, are you presently fully now?
I've worked with the Public Works Academy as well as I have my own business. I restarted that called technically training. Again, doing things like emergency management training, actually, I just came from doing some training out of Pinellas County Public Works. Teaching about safety, teaching readiness of traffic, how to set up work zones out in the street, things like that. I know also, being in a small city, I also know that it's really kind of a hands-on city as well. One of the things that I really enjoyed working in Beller Beach, I'd often get into, I forget the name of the type of four-wheel vehicle. But I would drive around the streets all the time and get to know the residents, you know, person by person, know their stories, you know, kind of try to, try to create the, you know, the small family atmosphere that Beller Beach needs to be and has been in my experience.
Very.
Thank you.
Hi Pete, this is Leslie Doncharo, how you doing?
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you too. As you know, you know, Beller Beach is unique in that it's a small community, totally residential, we don't have any business taxes and things like that, so money is always an issue. Can you give us a little information about your grant writing experience?
It's been a little bit since I've written a grant, but I've written several grants, like in Sandy Beach. If you look at the southern sand wall that they have, I got a grant for that. I believe for the beach doom walkovers, I did that. At least one of their boat ramps, I got grants for. I also worked with Swoop one to get community education grants in the past. And one of the things that I try to do is actually look at where we can take one grant and, you know, several different things at the same time. And what I gained, you know, community education. One of the small grants that I got in Sandy Beach was a community education grant. And one of the things that we use that for is to, to meet a lot of brand PBS or score water requirements, as well as to really educate the public on what public works does. More than just, you know, create materials. You know, I went to the elementary school, Gulf Beach's elementary school, taught to the kids, got them, gave them a lot of information that passed to, you know, to their parents. I had a lot of community presentations. I remember, early in my career, I had a community presentation, I thought I knew everything and all of a sudden, you know, going around the room and I found out, wow, this is a PhD in engineering, this is a PhD in chemistry. Some of the people that were on Blue Republican Committees. And really, rather than trying to talk at them, kind of turned it around and created a community forum for them to talk in, actually got that involved, working with the community, you know, meeting leaders as well. So again, you know, using some of the grants I've gotten from, you know, again, trying to look at the grants and try to get as many things that we, that we need in the city, you know, with the same grant funding.
Thank you very much.
I think, my example, how many years of experience do you bring and what was the most responsible position in city management had held and some accomplishments?
Okay, I started, well, my internship and things like that go back into 1996, 1997, 98. Good portion of that was in Pinellas County, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Pasco County. And then about 98, 99, made my way down to Pinellas County. So my history working full-time started about 1999, 10,000, Pinellas County. The most, I figured the word didn't use, but the most responsible position I had, you know, I just left with the city of Kennet City. And also, Beller Beach, I was your community services and IT director. Being in Beller Beach, it was really kind of an interesting time. I don't know if you all remember, I know Mr. Nataro does, when we actually took our old city hall, which was kind of dilapidated and falling apart, we had all kinds of air quality concerns inside the facility and things like that. We wound up knocking it down, working with Verizon, you know, the R S U that's right next to your city hall, and finding a way for us to be able to, you know, to build the city hall where we are now. Not only did we have to do all of that coordination and funding and all of that, but some of the most interesting memories I have is taking, you know, going from that old city hall into a single-family house on the next block over. And having to bring over all of the IT infrastructure, telephone infrastructure, over a weekend. And after we built the city hall, in one weekend, having to bring it all back to this new building and putting it all together to make it work.
Thank you.
I, Pete Glenn Young, speaking. You were here at Beller Beach from 2005, 2010, 2011 timeframe. It was a transition time because we had just moved from a strong mayor to the mayor of city council for government. And I'm just kind of wondering, what were the things that you observed that could have been improved on, that we did well, that we didn't do well? And if you were to come back here, do you have some ideas, the things you could probably take a really close look at? And perhaps maybe there's some experiences or expertise you're bringing directly from Kennet City back to Beller Beach?
Yeah, actually, I was hired, I'm literally in a transition, Reed Silverwood was your first city manager. And he recruited me from some county committees that we were together with the N P S committee. So I was your first public works director of sorts and kind of an assistant city manager of sorts. Very interesting time. The main thing that I've learned in recent times is the importance of strategic planning and getting us all together, getting a common vision, keeping open communication. And really bringing together many options to you all and providing you all the information to give the executive leadership and to pass that down to you to implement. Thank you very much.
This is Dave Gaddis again. Right now, we're in the middle of setting the next fiscal year budget. And this is something that we're not really struggling with, but we do encounter some issues with the entire process. Can you give me an example or maybe a rundown of what your idea of creating a budget would be like?
Well, it looks like you have a fair start at a budget, and I don't mean start by any means negative. I spent a couple days looking through your budget and I think it's pretty well-formed. I just, I really don't see a whole lot of improvement, I mean, by format, and it looks like you're generally in good shape. One of the things I'm very excited about working with the budget and until I actually get my hands on and get to talk to you all, you know, kind of more face-to-face and seeing some of the issues and some of the more recent history. Working with Andy Tess has been a great honor of mine, I really enjoyed working with them and I'd really like to collaborate with them to be able to kind of get a deeper into your budget. It's, like you said, there's quite a few things that kind of are limiting, the fact that you guys don't have businesses is kind of limiting. I think it's a great thing that, you know, we built the city hall and we built the city hall in such a way that we deal a lot of rentals and things like that. And it brings some, some revenue, but it is minor with you. You know, that's exciting. Really, without getting back involved, and I love the opportunity to meet with you guys again, you know, to really talk about the issues of Beller Beach and to see where we need to go with them. At this point, I really don't have a great handle on that, because obviously I'm on the outside.
Thank you, I have one more question. Capital projects management, can you give me an example of a difficult project that you manage?
Well, let's see, well, your city hall, the building of your city hall was a big project that I was involved with. The erection, or the replacement, I should say, of Howard Avenue Bridge was, was a little bit complicated. You know, during the discussions, I really was looking at making Howard Avenue Bridge a little bit different than it is now, was actually put in. When we were designing it, I can't, I'm trying to think of the name, Elite Engineering, I think, was the company that I was working with? I forget their name exactly, but we were looking at actually making it a little bit more of a decorative bridge. We were looking at expanding kind of a sidewalk area that would be, be active to the children in the area that used to do a lot of fishing in that area. What else was in, some of the other things when I, when I first got to Beller Beach, I remember talking to our city, oh, she was our city clerk at the time that became our city manager. I said, Nancy, where's all of our plans, you know, for, for the, you know, for Howard Avenue Bridge when it was constructed, you know, 40 years ago? She goes, oh, they're upstairs. I go up into the full of birds garage at the time, I mean, they were just disshuffled, we couldn't find any plans and basically it was really difficult to, you know, to put that there without knowing some of the specifics on those. And once we started doing construction, we found out there was, you know, some bad techniques that were done, such as throwing down, there was a huge amount of concrete that was placed there that we had to remove. And that cost an extra $25,000 at the time to remove. But just the idea of working with the community, working with our leaders and coming together to, you know, make a project like that happen, you know, was a wonderful opportunity to put that there. Although, like I said, I really think we missed some opportunities to, you know, to elevate that bridge. Or I forget how much work it would have cost, but it was marginal. And I think we could have made it a safer bridge, we could have had one that was a little bit more can use to pedestrian traffic, to fishing, to things like that.
Thank you.
Yes, Pete, this is Lloyd again. With the town of Kennet City, I know you weren't there a long time. So the time you were there, what do you think was the biggest challenge you had while you were there? And what skills did you use and how did you work through that challenge?
Well, one of the biggest challenges, I remember coming in my first day and literally there was two professionals, myself and a temporary employee. And I was like, okay, you know, this is a small staff, but, you know, this is something we can, you know, move forward from. And then day two or day three came about and it literally was just me and the temporary employee at the front counter. Yeah, it was very difficult to basically re-put together a staff. And for a short time, I feel like we were building a team together, you know, very close with the city clerk, I brought the city clerk in. When we were looking at how much that would cost to get the city clerk, well, it went out, you know, and advertised it. I believe we were talking about around 84,000 dollars and we had a budget of about $50,000, $50,000 to $60,000. I had to scour everybody I knew, really look for the best person I have I could get and found Annika Vazis at the college. She's now at the city senate and she's providing, in fact, I did a presentation to the municipal clerks association last week and got to see her room and go out to lunch, not this Friday, but Friday after. Really, one of the things that I truly believed in is to create, you know, I don't want to say a family environment, but in small cities, you know, having everybody work together, have honest communication, have, you know, really build a team. Unfortunately, a couple of things happened and that really forced, you know, a chain reaction. In fact, I remember talking to, you know, you know, at least several members of the council in Sandy Beach, you know. We're in a very difficult situation, as in it's unstable. We've lost two entire, you've lost the entire management staff a little while ago, we went through two interim city managers and now we have me. The biggest thing that we need is to have people comfortable in their jobs. We're building people from the ground up, it takes education, that takes collaboration, it takes a lot of communication. And that was starting to happen. Again, in the middle of a few months, it really was starting to happen and really some barriers started popping up that I don't really think needed to be there. I really need to, you know, again, I really didn't feel that communication is key and also just what do we call it, the chemistry. I've always had wonderful chemistry in Sandy Beach, Beller. I've always had wonderful chemistry in city beach, Miller Beach. For some reason, I didn't really have the same kind of chemistry, sorry, every place I've worked in, I've really had a strong chemistry with, except for this last city. I still have some really tight relationships and still talk to several people there regularly. But really just making sure that we're all working towards the same goal, I think, is very important.
All right. Was there a particular reason you decided to move on?
When I started seeing, like, as I said, I met with a bar and said, you know, some of the things that I'm seeing, some of the decisions that I see being made are really going to create this chain reaction that wound up happening unfortunately. Yeah, that's the reason I left, you know. Rather than then prolong a situation where it went to become more of a battle and to be quite honestly, could be destructive to the city, why don't I leave quietly, shake hands with everybody and, again, do what I do well, where I do well and allow them to find, you know, somebody, hopefully that they can find somebody that really can mend some fences and move the city forward. It really was a difficult situation and then we need to manage staffs leave within exactly one year. I think that that went down something. You know, they really do need a lot of assistance. I think I really should have been stronger, I bring outside help. I've talked to Rob Duncan, who's one of the consultants that's working there now, and he's trying to bring in some consulting. In fact, from what I understand, next month, they're going to bring in part of, sorry, not part of, an outside consultant to really try to mend some of the difficulties between council. There seems to be a couple of factions and I thought, you know, over some time, it's been some progress that now, you know, we can start mending and building those relationships between our councils. And at some point, it seemed to really not go that way. I think in the future, I'd be a lot stronger about, you know, when I see, you know, let's put it this way, when you see some kind of sickness, you know, repetitive disease, you call the doctor and you solve that problem.
All right, thank you, Pete.
We have time for one more question and I'm going to ask you to keep your answer brief and then that will conclude this interview. Mr. White. Mr. Taro. Mr. Zabel.
Where in your career can you point to demonstrate your personal self-motivation and goal achievement?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, sir?
Where in your career can you point to demonstrate your personal self-motivation and goal achievement?
I don't really understand the question. Do you mind rephrasing it?
Yeah. Can you point out somewhere in your career that you were self-motivated enough to set a goal and achieve it?
Okay, well, I guess just in general, you know, ever since I was a young man, I really found the government to be so amazing. And, you know, I wanted to get my first bachelor's in political science, my second bachelor's in environmental science and policy. And that led me to get my bachelor's in public administration. And I remember just even interning at the Uppercorps and in their development services department. I also interned in environmental labs of Asco County, public transportation. And just once I started getting involved, I said, wow, you know, forget about federal government. I mean, you know, that's got its interests and that's wonderful, but I think I really want to work for local government. And that's really been a, that's been a goal of mine and I've done that, again, since the late 90s. So I believe that that was me finding the role, getting into this world and making myself a resource. I talked to a lot of city managers, I was at FCCMA's professional development committee today, being volunteered for the strategic planning committee to, again, to bring education towards the management community. So again, the idea of getting involved with the city government at all levels from education, training, collaboration, just being a general resource has been my goal. Quite honestly, I feel like I met that and I continue to.
Thank you very much. We're out of time. Very nice to meet you and we appreciate your interest in the city manager position. We will contact you tomorrow.
Sounds wonderful. It was a pleasure meeting and seeing you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name.
All right, we have about 10 minutes. If anyone would like to discuss Mr. Cavalli and speak on pros or cons or likes, dislikes, I would be interested in hearing that.
Seems like he made a abrupt departure from Kent City, what I'm gathering. Got any notice?
Would it be a stretch, Randy? You had some experience at Kent City. Can you give us any background on the climate there?
Better question. I will speak to the candidates. I think you folks should handle that and reach your conclusions. As to the general question posed, the climate there, I would say that it certainly was a municipality in transition. Simple facts, in April of 2021, at the time, they had a manager, a clerk and two personnel, full-time personnel in town hall. By May 2021, all four of those people were gone within a month of each other. I was the town attorney at the time. We worked through the League of Cities to recruit an interim manager. That interim manager came, they had been interviewing in multiple positions and one of those positions came through while they were the interim and then they left within their first 45 days or so. And so they went through about three or four managers in 2021, culminating in Mr. Cavalli's selection in August of 2021 and then the clerk's selection in September of 2021. I don't think I'm saying anything out of turn to say that there are differences of opinion on the council as to how the manager council form of government should work, what is guidance versus what is interference versus, you know, and there are differing narratives on that and I'm not characterizing any one person's conclusions. But that created some dissonance and tension and ultimately by the spring of this year, early summer, their manager voluntarily separated from employment, their clerk voluntarily separated from employment and their attorney, me, separated from employment. I'd been there nine years. I'd just, you know, gone through that transition a year prior. So ultimately, I think that they, there's a lot of challenges in that community that, you know, some internal, some external, and I've said that in a couple of records, so I'm not saying anything out of turn. But I would just say that it's, you know, I would also caution, just generally speaking, the League of Cities, when it publishes materials on managers, says that the average tenure in the state of Florida is anywhere from four to six years in any one place. And four years is typically considered a pretty decent run. Manager departures and attorney departure, charter official departures tend to be set, often following elections. And so that's not without precedent. You can draw whatever conclusions you wish, I'll just give you that context.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
I know it's a difficult format, you know, 20 minutes, but what I was getting, he wasn't very focused. He wasn't, you know, he can answer questions, but he wasn't leaning toward a goal. In an interview, you should drag him around, go, okay, this is what I have done and this is how I did it. So it's a nation, I, your problem doing the following, doing X. You talk about writing contracts, I have, or the grant process. Should have said, yes, I have submitted 20 grants. Out of the 20, there was one in, what I would write to you is, this is all due to the board. That was lacking. It just seems very, it was passive and again, not focused.
It seemed to me that the interview just lacked content. It was, had a lot of filler in it and he didn't seem to have the focus for really any accomplishments that he could brag on. He'd say, yeah, I know this. I don't know what his role would have been in the construction of this building. It certainly doesn't seem like a person would be qualified to do that. And that's my comment.
Yes. I know Pete for before and very capable, very easy guy to work with and so, and he did a lot of here as far as working on a feature here in a project. He found it beautiful and stuff like that. I was not happy with his answers to the great questions and budgeting and things like that.
Why is he here, Peter?
Pardon?
Why does he need here?
Says he's here to help. I don't, I don't hear any of his excuses.
Looks like he went to another speaker.
He's going to be a while. I mean, he was treating.
I don't know if you can actually get into reasons why he may have what?
Why? Your personal issue or whatever? I don't understand. I, well, you could ask. At the record, I mean, I can't get to the head of it. It's all the reasons, you have insurance. I was happy. It's changed my policy.
Question started that maybe it's an awkward question that I asked, but you should, you ask us during the other interviews, you know, try to break on yourself. It's really hard to do. You gave it an opportunity. Look, tell me, where did you demonstrate your self-motivation and goal? And kind of didn't understand the question, which is the first, you know, object in my mind going, well, I've rewarded this a few times, see what you come up with. And it didn't really, the answer he got, you know, wanted to pursue a master because I like administration. Just that again, didn't seem like he had a goal, something he was working on.
All right, we've got about two minutes and then we'll start the next conference, which is with Mr. Riefler. You want to?
I think I'm good. I'll stick and thank you.
You sure don't. It's going to be a table.
Well, no, you gotta, I guess, you gotta be, now, the first thing you do is grab your orange, you have it.
We're here. A. You're gonna have to unmute. Can you hear me? Yes, can you hear us?
Yes.
All right. Next candidate is Mr. Kyle Riefler. Welcome, Mr. Riefler, and thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
I believe you know who all we are, but we're guests and very nice to meet you again. And would you please give us a brief introduction for the council?
Okay, my name is Kyle Riefler. I've worked for the city of Miller Beach for four years. Been in charge of public works where I started. After that, I assumed the role of assistant city manager, working for Mr. Man Reeves. Under his guidance, I learned the ins and outs of almost all facets of the city and believe I'm very qualified for this job.
Thank you very much. We're going to start this time with my smear gun and asking questions coming this way.
Hi, Kyle. You've seen the ins and outs of Miller Beach and if you could snap your fingers and change one thing, what would you do?
I would like to increase the level of understanding what the residents want. I'd like to develop a better reporting process so that we can analyze what it is that's most important to the residents and then be able to deliver on it. And ultimately, whenever somebody comes in question, being able to answer why we do what we do.
Mike Zabel.
Hi, Kyle. What makes you stand out from this field of experienced city managers and candidates with advanced degrees and 20-plus years of experience? Why should we hire you?
The reason I stand out is because I'm a certified floodplain manager. 100% of Miller Beach is in the flood zone. So everything that goes on in the city is related to flood in some way, form or another. It's very important that you understand that when you're looking at construction, when you're approving permits. At the same time, I familiar with two years ago around the CRS certification. That's also important over this because it provides them a 20% discount on flood insurance. Thank you.
All right, Luke.
Hi, Kyle. It's Leslie NoTerra. You talk a lot about the flooding on the side streets and the infrastructure and stuff. What is your idea for the beach side of the city? What would your plan, what would your plans be for that? To protect the property on the beach side?
I think it is important to support our drinking system on the beach side to encourage not destroying it during the, let it build up because it's our natural barrier to defend when a hurricane comes in. Another thing would be to just make sure that overall the management of the beach is correct or people are following the rules because that's a lot of what people on the beach side have to deal with is all that beachfront property.
Quick, thank you.
Good evening, Kyle. You've been with us for four years. You've been the assistant city manager for at least one. You've been actually men's right-hand manager, probably almost four of those years. What tasks have you confronted that you can't handle for this job? I mean, you know this, like I said, you've been here for four years. You've probably done everything from getting involved in underground lighting, stormwater, paving, beach, even refreshment. I'm just asking you, what do you believe you can handle or haven't failed to comprehend?
I haven't run into anything I can't handle. I've been fortunate enough to be in the interim position where I've come across a lot of things I haven't done directly. As far as, for example, like just testifying in a public hearing for code enforcement. Also dealing more directly with the budget, getting directly involved in code enforcement as far as notices and violations. Also, I've come across emergency management, directly involved with that. I've taken over reins on CRS program. I've been doing that for two years going around. And answering questions, floodplain questions to residents, approving permits, understanding the code now and applying construction in the city, dealing directly with the residents, communicating with them and meeting their expectations to the best of the ability of the city, given whatever the situation is. So so far, it's been a learning experience where I've continued and constantly improved what I do, but I haven't come across anything that I feel I couldn't handle.
Lloyd Roberts.
Hi, Kyle. This is Lloyd, how are you?
Great, how are you?
Good. So we've had a couple of discussions about public works projects and things like that the short time I've been here, which is good. So if you can share with us, not all public works projects typically go perfectly. It's just not the nature of that area. So if you can share a particular project that you've been involved with that met that criteria, where there was some challenges throughout, what were those challenges? met that criteria where there were some challenges throughout, uh, what were those challenges? What was the project? What were the challenges? What did you do to work through those? And at the end of the day, you walked away saying, wow, that worked that well?
Well, with the stormwater program, I started being involved when we started moving to the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth street. Um, and those projects comes to mind is when, uh, when you're, when you're digging up pipe and you run into something that the engineers didn't know was there and you had to figure out in the field, um, when you install a concrete box of some sort that dealing with lateral coming in from a property. Um, so it's kind of like thinking on your feet, working with the contractor and, uh, coming up with a solution for the problem. So, it's, it's always, nothing is set, um, and go straight to the thing. So, it's, it's always something that you have to make adjustments along the way. A lot of times towards the end of the project, when you're doing, uh, punch sheets just to make sure everything's completed, you know, you find things that you're not satisfied with. So, you have to go back to the contractor and work with them to get to the point of a level of expectation.
Okay, were there any, any of those projects you just referenced where there was a, a change order involved? And, and you recall any of those and how we actually worked through those as, as a city to determine whether or not you felt like the change order cost that they presented to you in the city and how you dealt with that?
Well, in, in the past three projects, we stayed within budget, um, so we did not have to do a change order. There's contingency built into the project itself, um, but we're thinking back, I don't even think we've touched the contingency. If we did, it was slightly, um, a lot of times there's other things in the project that as long as you're doing the accounting of what the contractor's actually doing and in the quantities, uh, sometimes you'll find that they don't actually fulfill all the quantities that are, that are in the plans. So, there is room, um, sometimes there's extra money if you move from one, uh, item to another.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Kyle. Um, you've worked with Lynn Reeves for quite a few years now. Uh, you called him over from, uh, Osmar, is that, is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
Okay, so, um, did you work for Lynn, uh, at Osmar also?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. Uh, what would be the difference in your management style versus Lynn Reeves?
The differences, um, I would say just with a generational difference, I think I'm, uh, definitely a little bit more inclined to use technology, um, to try newer ideas. Lynn has a lot of experience in a lot of different areas, uh, but I think being so the use of technology is a little bit more appealing to me, um, and being kind of coming up to date with how things have changed in different fields of the job.
Okay, I'm gonna ask you one more question and then I'll pass the tours here. Um, if you were hired as city manager, what would be your top five priorities?
Top five priorities, uh, one of my first priorities would be to hire my current position to, uh, deal with asset allocation of the important reporting procedures and, and on-the-ground management, um, that's needed, um, that I kind of put both right now. Uh, my next priority would be depending on when you make a decision, giving us through this budget year and getting to the start of the next one. I'd like to start early on next year's budget and rethinking kind of how we do things based on our discussions this year. Uh, following that, like I said, with the reporting process, I'd like to, to get more feedback from, from the code enforcement and, and what the residents are, are asking us to do and to try and prioritize what is most important so that we can focus our efforts towards even what needs are. Uh, fourth. Changing the way that we do our stormwater projects. We came across a project this year where, um, you know, we kind of like wanted to analyze more, we didn't quite get to, we weren't early enough in stage. So, moving forward, we got the next projects, uh, 17 days, I'm already working on getting the data that we need to, to really look at and consider how, how we may work, be a prioritized, what's important, uh, do our money the best spent, um, to get the most effect for that project. And, um, fifth, I'd say the fifth, I would like to, oh, adjust our bidding process. I would kind of go hand in hand with the budget. I would like to make sure we have adequate funds budgeted for projects so we're not going in possibly being underfunded. Um, I want realistic budget numbers and then at the same time, I want to tweak our bidding process slightly to, to possibly with the stormwater projects to give an option to, of, of a higher spec of job, um, to see, to really be able to lay out and not tie ourselves down to lowest bill bidder, to really weigh out, um, is, is this contractor gonna be, deliver a better product? Is it worth the extra money to, to, to achieve the better product? Because we, you know, we're spending a lot of money to begin with, make sure we do it right. Thank you, Mr. Reifler. Mr. Baker?
All of those things, those five points you just made, were those communicated to Lynn Reeves? Did you try to put those into motion while you were working for Lynn Reeves? I mean, you talk about this, this generational kind of thing and maybe there's a difference in the vision where you want to go, but I mean, so, so you had a vision of something you wanted to fix or try to improve upon. My question is, did you try to put those into motion as assistant city manager and how did that work for you?
Um, at any point where we were looking to gather more data for a project, um, I jumped all over using technology. So, it's definitely something I've embraced with giving the opportunity and direction from Lynn. Um, being in charge of myself, I, I would probably do more of it. Um, and again, uh, kind of just from this last, past year, some of the, some issues we're dealing with, um, when it comes to inflation and really kind of analyzing our projects, uh, then, then it's motivating me to do so.
Mike Sager.
Uh, yeah, Kyle, how would you improve our strategic plan?
Um, to improve it, I mean, I think that going through the process, uh, more often than not throughout the year is important to ensure that, um, that we are sticking to what is most important and, and our, and our objectives and the projects that we're completing are, are satisfying in the strategic plan. Um, the more you bring it up, the more possibly you can get feedback from residents that are attending meetings or at least aware of it, um, to, to find out maybe if there's, there's tweaks. I'd say the strategic plan, mostly we analyze to our residents and, and find out what's most important to them and then adjust it accordingly.
Thank you.
Liz, move to Tara.
I have no other questions.
Frank Baker.
Kyle, you, you've been privileged to be at some more, well, I guess it should privilege to be at some more budget meetings. The council person, um, mentioned last night, which, um, total agree, if it could actually be worked out, to come up with a budget that you can explain in five minutes. Do you think you're capable of putting something like that together?
I definitely think I'm capable of that. I think it's a matter of working through the numbers, finding out what's most important, what do people want to see and, and know when, when you're explaining the budget, um, and then dumbing it down, so to speak, I mean, to a simpler knot, to just tie it back into the main knot. And, uh, as deep as you want to dive into it, we can. Thank you.
Lloyd Roberts.
So, Kyle, I've noticed on many of our requests for bids that we put out there, we don't really have too many contractors that respond. Obviously, that's not great with the city because, um, you know, we need to create competition out there. Um, I'm assuming that most of these contracts that go out, we also have pre-bid meetings. So, when the contractors come in, and I'm a contractor, Frank's a contractor, we're the only two contractors in there, um, that's not a great situation because I kind of know how Frank bids, he knows how I bid, so we're probably not going to get the lowest bid. So, do you have any ideas and/or thoughts as to what the city can do to increase the number of contractors that are going to participate in our request for bids?
So, a lot of times when we do, uh, send out our bid, our solicitation, we send it to everybody that I've worked with in the past, um, we advertise it in the newspaper. Um, and at the same time, you get a lot of companies that do jump all over, um, wanting the information for the bid, so they're kind of remarketing it for us, but it, as it's showing, adds up to the produced grade results. Um, in my mind, I think I could reach out to other cities, if, if there's local contractors. If you want someone, you want them not close, you want them local, you don't want them going too far across the city, um, but to, to get a, a deeper pool of, of the contractors in the area and, and getting interest so that they do bid.
Okay.
Kyle, um, can you give me some examples of, of working with both the state and federal governments?
Um, I work directly with the state when I'm doing a grant, fulfilling grant requirements. Um, I also work with the state when it comes to, um, FDIP requirements for permitting our MS4, which we complete every year for our stormwater system. Um, federal government, mostly, most things that, that go, go to the feds do go through the state, um, they're kind of like the in-between conduit, uh, federal government. Uh, I would say FEMA directly, and, and most of my FEMA classes are related and straight from federal government and guidance, um, so anytime you need advice, uh, questions about floodplain management, you, you do contact that level.
I'm just curious, have you ever had to deal with the Army Corps of Engineers?
I have not dealt directly with the Army Corps of Engineers, no.
Thank you.
I'm confident in everybody, Kyle.
I come from a profession where confidence does not necessarily equate to competence. So, a concern that I had is when we're dealing with budgets, capital, planning, projects, my fear is group think kind of stuff. I mean, what, what I mean by that is you follow Lynn Reeves down here and you've worked in his mentorship all this time, so my concern is we don't know what we don't know. So, the question to you is, you know, how do we explore other ways of doing the budget? How do we explore other ways of managing capital projects? Do you see my concern here? Is that, um, it's the broadness and exposure to other ideas, the way other cities do it, not just, hey, this is the way we've always done it here because that's the way we did it up in, uh, Osmar, that's the way we've always done it in Bella Beach. I guess my concern is, how's it done in other places? And, and are, are we able to open up our minds to that? I guess I need a little convincing from you that, that that's a possibility here. Did I explain that sufficiently?
Yeah, um, I guess I can say that, uh, my manager of the level projects, um, has been based on my experience on some of the directly with Lynn, uh, but I also have worked projects that were under Lynn, but I had to deal with the state and the state level of inspection. So, I, I do know, um, inspection and project management on a different level, it's a satisfactory grant, requirements are higher, then we're keeping track of more data to ensure that, you know, the specs will be in head. Um, at the same time, when it comes to budget processing and capital projects, um, it's a tight network, um, in the Pennsyl County area, so there's a lot of people to ask questions to, uh, a lot of things you can compare, especially when it comes to some of the budget and briefs, things that you're looking at from other cities. Um, it can, it can definitely be done, um, and look at, kind of how everybody else does it. That's one thing government, you find all the time, is people asking other officials in government how they do it and sharing information.
Thank you, Mr. Reifler. Uh, we appreciate your interest in the city manager position. Uh, we're out of time, as you know, you set the schedule, so, uh, we appreciate it and we'll give you an update tomorrow on the county's. Thank you.
That's great, thank, thank you.
I was just gonna say if we could just keep sidebars into the mic rather than on the one. Okay, everyone, uh, so we just interviewed Kyle Reifler. Looking to comments now. Let's just, uh, go ahead and start with Lloyd Roberts.
Honestly, I'd like to wait until we've known the candidates, like, kind of compare different skill sets and where I think everybody is gonna fit into this. Um, I think he had, um, good, he was well-prepared. I think the questions that we asked today, um, I feel like, uh, I think it was brought out by somebody, I think if you just compare the experience and the certifications and, uh, within the city manager type of a position, I think on paper so far, there are candidates that, um, are far ahead, and, and, so that's something to take into account, I believe, in the equation, and we'll see how your candidates do.
Thank you. Frank Baker.
Um, I think he answered all the questions very directly, like the last candidate, I mean, gave your answer. I think he's got the experience of four years here under a good city manager, um, I think he's a good candidate to do the job.
Liz, move to Tara.
I agree sort of with what Lloyd said, and other people who have experience in management, city management, degrees in that, although it's his background is in Parkland, right? It's hard to compare, we know everybody.
And I'll remind everyone, after we interview the last candidate, we'll take a break and then we'll, we'll come back immediately and then we will have a discussion and, uh, maybe a lively debate and then we'll eventually take it to, uh, Mike Sager.
Yeah, um, looking at my personal experience with, you know, leadership, there's been poor leaders and great leaders, and what really concerns me is he's been a lone supervisor for his whole professional life since, it's like 2006, and never had the ability to reach out to other mentors or to be mentored by other competing ideas. And he talked about he had a generational conflict that he was technology oriented. Well, it would have been really great for his professional development to have had another mentor that maybe is different. So, he had a, a different set of viewpoints. Um, unfortunately, when you're in mentor relationship since 2006, that's, you're kind of almost getting a, a light in mind, unfortunately, so.
Glenn.
Mike makes a good point on that. I, I thought he was direct and well-prepared. I think I addressed through my last question, Mike deserves. There is also, Leslie touched on it there, I mean, if you kind of look at everything in the mix of qualifications, certifications, there are people abundantly more qualified than that. A follow-on to Mike's thinking, I think, is during those last four years, has there been any motivation towards greater professional development? You follow the floodplain certification stuff, or any, has there been, has there been ICFA certifications, certified political attorney, financial manager? I would put that word in.
Um, from my perspective, that was the perfect interview for someone that didn't sit in all of our meetings every time the doors were open. He knew exactly how to answer the questions because these are topics that we're constantly discussing. But on the, um, as far as the experience goes, if, remember I looked at the various resumes and applications, uh, he's a very young, very young person, and I don't mean that by age, I mean, young in the profession. Definitely, uh, I'll keep my eye on him and we'll see where it goes.
Any other comments? Frank Baker?
Uh, leaving. Sure, can I have a ballot now or?
Um, yes, you can have a ballot and...
Yes, you can have a ballot and we'll just leave it on the desk and face now.
Okay.
I think that's fair enough.
And Peggy, would you make a note, let's just say at 6:40, Frank Baker.
6:40?
Yes. I appreciate you attending, Frank, and I'll.
I'm sorry, I have to leave with a high understanding.
And we still have a forum, so we're still keeping it.
Jill, have you ever signed with you?
I did not see her signing on that one. And I don't know if she's listening on the phone or not.
I'll take a call.
Yes, you can. Everybody. Right, thank you very much. Yeah, we're, we're in the process of operating, so we actually have two more candidates to interview, and the next interview begins in two minutes. All right, everyone, the final candidate is Mr. Robert Daniels. Welcome, Mr. Daniels, and thank you for joining us. My name is Dave Gadsen, Mayor of Bella Beach. Very nice to meet you. Would you like to start off by giving us a brief introduction? I'm sorry, Mr. Daniels, we cannot hear you, you probably need.
Can you see us? Can you hear us?
He can hear us. He's still working out the mutagen.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Before we begin, do you prefer to go by Bob or Robert?
Bob.
All right.
The legal name's Robert, but all my friends call me Bob, so.
All right. Would you like to give us a brief introduction?
Sure. First off, I'm gonna thank all of you for taking your time out of your day to give me this interview. I'm definitely looking forward to being back over on the west coast of Florida. And it's a great opportunity that you've afforded me to come in and interview and hopefully and give a run for the money with the other candidates. But I think in the long run, you can see I've got a proven record of managing in Madera Beach. I've worked a lot of hard projects and we're able to bring them to success. And, you know, most of my career, I was in law enforcement, primarily worked my way up through the chain of command in Boca Raton and retired out as an assistant chief. And then I was chief of police in a number of jurisdictions. Again, picking up old pieces of experience along the way and not only running the police department, but also being a key figure in the city government. Then I kind of found my niche. I like working in smaller cities because you tend to get to be able to develop one-on-one relationships with individuals. Even as busy as Madera Beach was, you know, there was still a lot of the residents that I got a chance to meet with and develop friendships with. And I think that's kind of important, having a channel of communication that's direct with the residents. After all, they're, you know, they're the ones that have a lot invested and, you know, there's a lot of long-term residents in all of the coastline cities in Manaus County. So I think that's what's interesting. I'm a big history buff, so learning about what life was like in, say, Bella Beach, you know, in the forties. And then, you know, just kind of working your way up and just really interesting grass again. So one of the things I instituted in Madera Beach, and I'll be very brief, because I know you all only have 20 minutes scheduled, so, but just having that communication on a monthly basis at least, where we would go out to a particular location, whether it be a homeowners' association group or whatever, and have what we call breakfast with Bob. And it's kind of a roadshow, but I think it's important that, we don't expect everybody to come to City Hall, I think we need to be able to go to them. And I think that's kind of that smaller community spirit that I like to foster. And, you know, whether you're a city manager or whoever you are within the city, it's nice to have that personal touch with individuals.
Thank you very much. And we'll start off the question with Lloyd Roberts.
Hi, Bob. My name's Lloyd Roberts. How are you? Great. How are you this evening? Doing wonderful. I did notice on your resume, that this is when you were with the town of Melbourne Beach, that you were involved with rehabilitating your stormwater utility system. But what even more importantly, that you were working with FEMA to get a grant. Could you expand on that particular project and where it started and how it ended? FEMA has had throughout the years mitigation grants. So obviously, during one of the storms, they had an exposure to stormwater and roadway collapsed. And then that kind of, you know, that all really happened just before I came on board. But we took it a step further and we did some analysis on what our needs were throughout the whole town. And then we wrote up a proposal for FEMA. And with, I had some grant writers that assisted us at college level. And between that and our partners with Keep of Art Beautiful, which is, you know, kind of that piece and looking at the sustainability aspect. And we were successful in getting it covered. I think it was roughly about 1.1 million is what we were able to get reimbursed for. It was a reimbursement grant, so we had to come up with money out of our reserves first. And they reimbursed pretty quickly. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Natura.
Hello, Bob. My name's Leslie Natura. The question I was gonna ask you, sort of covered in your opening statement, Madera Beach versus Bella Beach, we are unique in that we are totally residential. What difference do you see between in being a manager of a town like Madera Beach versus a small town like Bella Beach, which is all residential?
Right. And Melbourne Beach, they had a small business district, but when I was in Melbourne Beach, but it was primarily residential and they didn't really want business. You know, they had A1A, and, you know, so you can't really keep people away from the commercial sites. But they really didn't focus on having a business district or downtown. So, and again, it's a matter of what that community climate is. And, you know, so that's kind of what we worked with. In Melbourne Beach, you had a couple restaurants, but, you know, you could drive a mile and a half north and you'd have a whole row of restaurants that weren't in our jurisdiction. So, and the residents kind of liked it that way. It was kind of low-key. After about eight o'clock, things started to slow down. And aside from having A1A come through the center of the town, you know, even that traffic started to get light because there was nothing really for anybody to drive to unless they were a resident of our town or the county area that was to the south of us. So again, I just think it's a different focus. You know, in Melbourne Beach, we did have tourism that we worked with and businesses and everything else. But, you know, that just gives us more energies to spend on the other things that are important, like, you know, sustainability and, you know, looking at how we address sea level rise issues and, you know, touring up the stormwater systems and all those type of things. So it's not that it's a slower pace, I think, but you have more time to get and interact with the residents and get out there, you know, break that magnetic attraction from the seat of your chair to the seat of your pants and get out and walk around. And that's kind of the way I like to manage anyhow. Not, you know, necessarily being behind a desk all the time. I know, you know, when you have a smaller staff, you're counted on and doing more of the nuts and bolts administrative. And that's fine, that's the way it was in Melbourne Beach as well. But, you know, I got out and worked on some of the Public Works projects and we rebuilt our gazebo and did a number of things just with the staff of Public Works. I was there swinging the hammer as well.
Thank you.
Bob, Mike Zabel. I mean, I gotta tell you, with your resume and we're looking at cities Melbourne, 3101, 7,000 North Road, 3,800 Madera Beach, we're only 472. Frankly, we're kind of on the poor end of the scale. You know, we don't have a big budget. Of all the places, I mean, I saw your career, it looked like you went up. Why are you kind of stepping back for a small place like Bella Beach?
Well, like I said, I kind of like smaller communities. You know, it gives you more chance to get involved with the grassroots and what's going on, gives you more time to interact with the commissioner, the council. And, you know, so, you know, those are things that I really enjoy. I don't need the hustle and bustle of, you know, working. And obviously, I spent a lot of time in Boca Raton and then as a manager, working down in North Bay Village. And, you know, Melbourne Beach was good. And then, you know, to me, Bella Beach is just a treasure. You know, it really is. And to be able to work there is just, you know, something I could do for the rest of my life.
Okay, and just follow-up. I mean, I see the city managers. What's your code enforcement method? How do you prefer doing code enforcements?
Well, you know, we've done it both ways. I had, when I was in Melbourne Beach, I hired a part-time code officer that we had, and they primarily worked in the evenings and on the weekends, kind of fluctuated their 20 hours that they had. And then, you know, when we were in, when I was in Madera Beach, we had the sheriff's office with two community service officers that also handled our code enforcement. And then getting back to North Bay Village, we had one full-time individual that dealt with the code issues. So I think you kind of mesh what your problems are, what your needs are, and you try to get involved in that. And a lot of times, even in Madera Beach, I got involved in code issues because you still didn't have an officer on all the time and I just happened to always be around. So, well, not just happen, but, you know, you're there and sometimes you can resolve an issue better than anybody else, and that's what I've tried to do. Thank you.
Mike Swier.
The, I think Mike Zabel touched on it, the size of Bella Beach is a concern. There are homeowners associations bigger than, than condo associations bigger than the city of Bella Beach. We have a very thin, very broad, we have a broad skillset, but very thin depth of skills so far in our staff. Very few people are there, they're spread thin here. My concern is that we don't know what we don't know sometimes. And I looked through your qualifications, the EMPA certified government financial manager, ICMA credential manager, I think that's important. So I guess my question is, I look towards people with experience in other municipalities, other government agencies, because I kind of like this idea of cross-pollination and bringing ideas from outside. I'm always concerned about group think and tunnel vision and again, we don't know what we don't know. So with respect to budgets and capital planning and projects, that sort of thing, how do you intend to capitalize on those experiences in other municipalities and your credentials that can benefit Bella Beach?
Well, you know, a lot of times you can pick up from items that you've done in another jurisdiction. So revenue sources are always a big thing that you can look at and legislative allocations. We were, we became very successful that with using Linda Chaney, the state representative that covered our area too. But, you know, and doing those efforts that we needed to do and writing up the applications and sometimes you got turned down. But, you know, it never stopped us from asking for the money to get done with the projects that we needed to do. And I think the key thing right now is sustainability. That's an important issue. So anything that we can couch towards sustainability and from my colleagues that I've spoken to and from the items that I've been reading, that's really where the important dollar is gonna be. You know, we look at security and law enforcement and those type of things. But I think more pertaining to Bella Beach is just gonna be, what are we gonna do to better mitigate those problems that we have from sea level rise and some sustainability issues? So Bella Beach will be there 100 years from now. And, you know, and I was kind of, I think when you deal with a smaller town, it's easier for people to understand that. As you get larger cities, it's not. So I think your city, you know, although like you said, it's smaller than, you know, some of the places that I've worked in, but it's, I think it's, there's a lot that we can get done. And we have to do it together. You know, those homeowners associations and condo associations, you know, we have to get buy-in from them. And that's my job. You know, I know you all do your part as being the governing body, but it's my job to make sure that we get the day-to-day buy-in from what we want to accomplish.
Thank you very much. Hi, Bob. It's Dave again. I noticed that you know all about how small we are, but can you tell me, what research have you done on Bella Beach? What do you know about us?
Well, I know your previous manager was very involved with that same communication that I've been able to develop with the county level and maybe not Barry as much, but, you know, with Jill. And I think you all are very progressive in addressing stormwater situations and coming out with a strategic plan. That's very important. Sometimes when I talk about strategic planning, everybody all of a sudden says, well, you know, I gotta go, you know, everybody drops off. So I think those are important items that you have in your tool chest because you have to know, number one, where you are before you know where you want to go. And it sounds to me like from 2019 and on, you all have been working at that, you know, from an outsider's point of view, I find that very encouraging. Because a lot of times elected officials deal with, well, the budget. elected officials deal with, well, the budget, you know, we have it here. But really strategically, we have to look what we're gonna be doing in the future and really having a sustainability plan in the future or some of the items that I see that we can work on together and come up with some strategies that we need to survive.
Thank you very much. Lloyd Roberts.
Hey Bob, this is Lloyd again. So, I have a very good childhood friend who was the city manager in the city in Texas for 34 consecutive years, which is unbelievable. So, I called him and when we knew we were gonna look for a city manager, and through the conversation, at some point, he shared with me that, well, Lloyd, prior police chiefs, he has found out, do very well in a city manager opportunity. Why do you think that is?
I think because, you know, right away, you're dealing with somebody that's got a value set and you know, it usually centers around being honest, being ethical and moral. And you know, those are three things that I've used as my value set. You know, my son's an Eagle Scout and so we worked through the whole scouting program with him. Now he's 20 years old in the University of Alabama. But that's just an example. I think, I think we're more value-driven on doing what's right for the right reason at the right time. And also, law enforcement teaches you to do a lot of self-reflection. You know, there's many days that, you know, I made decisions as a chief of police and some of them might've been personnel decisions, some of them might've been budget decisions and even as a city manager. And I would try on my drive home, because you know, you never really get a chance to have quiet sometimes. So, on my drive home, I would reflect, okay, what were the good things that we accomplished today and what were the things that we could tweak a little bit? And I think a lot of law enforcement officers, you know, even like, you know, ashamed of what occurred in the elementary school in Texas, but you know, they always look and reflect on things, whether it's good or bad, and they look how to address it. If it's good, how can we make it better? And I think, you know, having that mentality as a manager, I think is very helpful because, you know, I don't have an ego. You know, it's, I learned long ago, you know, your ego can't get bigger than anybody else's. So, you know, I'm used to just kind of working at the service level, but being a manager that's gonna lead. And when something goes wrong and I'm not perfect, if I make a mistake, you all are gonna be the first ones to know about it. And I think that's part of the thing of having a police chief, because they're gonna be straight up with you, they're gonna be honest. And I think that's what you need, particularly in a smaller jurisdiction, because one thing leaking out could have a disastrous effect. And so, if you're honest and you're truthful along the way, I don't think you can go wrong.
Well, thank you for that answer, Bob. You had me all the way up to the fact that your son went to Alabama. My friends waited for Mom and so we're gonna have to work that out.
Yeah, we'll work that out. You know, the iron bull's always a big game.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Daniels, we're out of time. Boy, that was the last 20 minutes.
I tried to keep it short too, Mayor, but you know, I get the talking sometimes. I apologize.
No apology necessary. We appreciate your interest in the city manager position and someone will be contacting you tomorrow to let you know how things round out at the end of the speaking. All right.
Okay.
Very nice of you to meet you. Have a good evening.
It was a pleasure meeting all of you and if you have any other further questions, feel free to give your call.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Ten minutes left. Ten minutes left.
Okay. That puts me, it was supposed to be the last one, but he's the last one. Let's start off with Vice Mayor Gunn. Any comments?
I thought that was a very excellent interview person. Very focused, very professional. In his own words, okay, besides just the qualifications and certifications, that answers my concerns about the cross-pollination issue, but in his own words, things like, never stop asking for the money, he used the word together, and he talked about this value set as a form of law enforcement officer. Those three things are just, presumably right there. Hope those were very important takeaways, I think. I thought he was very cool.
You hit it on the nose and you said, that was fantastic, because it meant that we were engaged, he was direct, and we were engaged in what he was talking about and were kind of prodding for answers. Things that stood out, he said, I talked to my peer community, never heard that from, you know, former city managers, like, I, we were always kind of pushed, said, hey, you talked to Bel Air, what is Indian Rock School? And he does that correctly, he's reaching out to his peer community of fellow city managers. He believes in strategic plans, you know, he said, you gotta know where you're at so you know where to go. Community gave us the two things that really stood out. It's the, Bob's, you know, breakfast, Bob, and the understanding that he's the frontman, he's the person that goes to the condo association, not us, he's the face. So, yeah, like everybody else, very impressive. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor.
I agree, I was very impressed, it's truly, with a small town like Bel Air Beach, his experience in Melbourne Beach, it was very impressive.
I think, I think as a group, we all asked very good questions with him as well, very open-ended questions and he would just take that question and speak for a while. Like you said, that's why we were so engaged, because it was interesting to hear what he said and how he answered the question. So, though he did a great job and so far, he's, that's fantastic.
I would have to agree with you, his qualifications, his experience, he knew exactly what to say and it wasn't just, it was legitimate, real answer from experience. Very, very, very. Any other comments?
Yeah, we do a back and forth with the city managers as council members and all the candidates so far, that's the one I felt comfortable with asking a question and getting a answer based on experience, law. And there's one other point that I needed to drive home is when we took our course, they said, there's people there that actively pursue their state rep, phone them, went down and saw them, and that's how you get the money, get in their ear and they will take care of you. Too often, they don't hear from the city. And he's actively doing that.
And that's definitely one of the things that all of these communities in this area are lacking on, is we can't figure out how to get funding for projects, we can't figure out how to get funding for big tours. Sometimes you have to be a phone-in, someone's side to make things happen.
You gotta sit down and tell them, hey, we need them, we're here to support you, but we need that.
So, I guess in my mind, the elephant in the room is, Madera Beach has lost and is possibly are gained, the question is, is why did it base this opportunity? I mean, it went through the hiring process.
I know a little bit of a backstory, but I don't know if, am I allowed to discuss it? Ray? I know a little bit of.
No, I heard the question. Whether you're allowed to discuss it, whatever knowledge you have can be shared. Certainly if it's derived from, most especially, I would say, if it's derived from public sources or publicly available information. If you're concerned about not regurgitating the candidate, you may wish to, depending on how you're tracking, you may wish to say, if that's a question we're interested in, we see you at the next round. But it's, either way, it's your prerogative as to how you choose to proceed.
I think that I would like, if he advances to the next round, maybe we can address some of these topics at that time. I really don't want to sway one way or the other beyond the knowledge that I have firsthand as to what I have tonight. Any other comments or would anyone like to take a two or three minute break?
Take a break.
All right. I thought she was dialing, but she said she was expecting you. Okay, I don't know if she's still connected or not.
Maybe, she said, she had a six o'clock meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, will she be allowed to vote, Ray?
She.
She called in, was she?
Well, she can't do, well, you did a ballot at one time remotely, but she's gonna have to call in. And that's why I encouraged her to be here tonight, if any way possible.
So, how you vote, you have. Maybe it's a area where, it doesn't matter, but it may not matter if the council.
Okay, let's start discussing the process and take a break.
So, name, I've never lived in a name. Is that where you're from? No, I'm a Florida born and raised. My wife is as well, her parents are from New England. They have, in the family, they have a vacation house, a lot of layers. My wife's on there virtually every summer of the year.
Yes, good afternoon.
Is this Mr. Griffin?
Yes, this is, Mayor.
This is Dave Gattis, City of Bel Air.
Hey, Mayor Gattis, nice to talk with you. I'll put you on speakerphone.
Okay, well, we've got you on speakerphone loud and clear. So, I'm not sure where the technical difficulty was, but thank you for hanging in there and joining in. You're now the final candidate.
Well, that's good. Well, thank you for hanging in there too. It's been a long day for you, I'm sure, and I really appreciate you bringing me at the end. It's a pleasure to talk with each of you.
Okay, so, would you like to go ahead and give us a brief introduction?
Well, I've been blessed to have a productive, energetic career being a city-county manager, a city engineer, public works director, utility director for a number of years. Much of that experience has been in Florida. I've been blessed to work with great city councils, so you know, over the years, we've accomplished tremendous things. It's amazing what you can accomplish when you work together and you work hard. I'm ICMA certified, credentialed, city-county manager. I'm National Institute of Management certified. I'm a registered professional engineer in seven states, including Florida, among other things. And I am serving as a consulting engineer now. I'm a senior engineer, project manager with a large engineering firm that is getting started in Florida. But to be honest with you, I miss municipal work very much. And when I read your opportunity and the things that you have on your plate that you'd like to accomplish, I am truly interested in joining you, working with you, working for you and with the staff and accomplishing all that you envision.
Thank you very much. All the council members have prepared questions for you, so if you're ready, we're gonna begin. We're gonna start off with Glenn Gunn. Please introduce yourself and start your question.
Good evening, Ken. Thank you very much for your time. Glenn Gunn, on this end here. Your credentials are very impressive. I put a lot of emphasis on the ICMA credential, city manager and professional engineer aspect of your experience. A concern I would have is, you bring a lot to this city with those that experience and your credentials there, but is it something that you will tend to focus all your energies on, in the engineering side, to the exclusion of all, some of the other things that are going on? Communications is a big thing for us and engagement with our residents, budgeting?
Oh, absolutely. And your credentials, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the council is, are also equally impressive. It would be honored to work for you and work with you. No, I would not be doing any more engineering work for the consulting firm. My engineering work would be for you, you and our good residents, our good citizens. And so, I bring a lot of energy, enthusiasm, a lot of experience, and I know that we can accomplish an awful lot. It's a great opportunity. It's a wonderful city.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mike Zabel here. Looked at your background, have you worked with the Army Corps of Engineers?
You have, in my era, as you can see what I've done, you have no choice but to work with the Army Corps of Engineers. Now, they control the permitting, much of the permitting for many of the things that you need to do and have to get done, so you need to satisfy the Army Corps of Engineers to pull your permits, be able to conduct your needed projects and needed work, but it's a good thing. I've had a very good relationship with the Army Corps of Engineers over the years. There are a lot of very talented, very dedicated engineers and so, it's been a real positive working relationship and yes, I'm comfortable doing that. They're also a great source for money too. There's a number of wonderful grant programs they have available and I've tapped into those over the years with a lot of success.
That's a good one. Why don't you follow up on that? Because we're a very small community, we really don't have outside sources of money. Tell me how you go about getting that money from other sources?
A number of ways. You certainly develop a relationship with the officials, the working staff for those state and federal agencies. I've also been worked very well through our elected officials at the state and the federal level. And you help, you make requests, but you also have a clear idea of what's possible, what the program is you'd really like to access. And you do a lot of the legwork for the legislator, for the staff, to help move in that direction. And you deliver, deliver on time and on budget with your projects and take time to give credit where credit's due and celebrate that success. Give you an example, for instance, when I was brought into Mississippi to head the largest water agency in Mississippi, the Pearl River Valley Water Supply District, we were also the largest developer and still the largest developer in the state of Mississippi. We developed 50 communities, along with 50 park and recreation facilities, boat launches, golf courses, et cetera, around this 45-mile-long reservoir in the heart of Mississippi. Three days after I accepted the position, the board president, Earl Walker, called me up and said, Ken, you know, there's something we haven't told you. He said, we have no vision and we're broke. He said, our entire capital program for this very large entity is $200,000. That covers everything, all the roads, all the sewers, all the parks, recreation facilities, everything. We need you to help us secure funding. And so, for that little agency that we had, we had a budget of, time, about $12 million when I started and we left, it was about $16 million, we secured $50 million in outside funding in grants, appropriations, partnerships with the public and the private sector and accomplished amazing things that otherwise would have been totally impossible. I like doing that.
Thank you.
Mr. Griffin, my name's Leslie Notaro.
Leslie?
Leslie.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too, sir. Looking through your resume and stuff, it appears that you've been working with large cities, counties, large entities. As you know, Bel Air Beach is a very small entity, totally residential. What challenges do you?
Well, I think that the challenges, I see it as an opportunity where you get to not only, uh, work with the, with the council to envision what needs to be done, but you actually get to do it yourself, uh, because you're, you're a good part of the workforce that's gonna do what the council and the public envision. And yes, I have worked with Hillsborough County, which is, which is unbelievably huge. And, uh, frankly, that was the shock. So, uh, most of the entities I've worked with have been on the smaller side. Uh, King William County is a county administrator. From all the departments, all the employees, that was 100, um, that was 100 employees total. We have a population of about 14, uh, 14,000. Uh, when I was, uh, utility director, electric water and wastewater for Smithfield, North Carolina, uh, we were a, a small community, uh, a community of about, uh, 10,000. Um, and I realized those were a little bigger, and even though the agency I mentioned in Mississippi, uh, we had a total of just a, just 100 staff. Um, so, most of what my work has been with smaller communities, and I like the hands-on work, uh, that's an opportunity to, uh, to really get the job done. You have to jump in there and do it yourself and work with our good team.
Thank you.
Hi, Ken, my name is Lloyd Roberts. How are you today?
I'm, I'm very good. Uh, thank you. I, yes, I saw, I saw your picture and read a little bit about you.
Oh, absolutely. Appreciate that. So, going back to the county administrator position, so that that was actually great information. So, the King William County, what was the number of, um, citizens there in the county?
In Hillsborough County or King William? King William County was, uh, yeah, very small county, about 12,000 residents at the time.
Okay, so, in that poll, comparing to some of the, um, more engineering type opportunities you had, what did you enjoy most, working in the environment of more of a county administrator type role as opposed to, uh, leading, um, a large engineering opportunity?
I enjoy getting projects done. Now, I enjoy the process of, uh, of developing a, a vision, a plan, a strategy with, uh, the council, with the citizens, with the staff, and, uh, then, uh, moving forward to find the financial resources, uh, the grants and appropriations to, to make it much easier and much more possible to do, and then moving through the obstacles and, uh, getting, uh, those visions and those projects, uh, done on time and on budget, and, uh, we see our citizens enjoying them. That's what, that's what really makes me smile.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Griffin, this is Dave Gaddis again. Um, Bel Air Beach is smaller, much, much smaller than any of the communities you've ever worked in, even though some of them seem to be small. Uh, we have no businesses, uh, most of our utilities are outsourced, um...
Right.
Is there a possibility that you would get here and be bored?
No, because, uh, there aren't many of us to do the good work that needs to be done, so I would, uh, just the opposite. I would be, uh, quite busy, quite, quite energized. You know, and to give you an idea, you know, I mentioned Smithfield, a little, a little larger, for instance, but, you know, my, my budget for the three utilities, electric water and wastewater, and you know how, how expensive electricity is, even with those budgets, we were, we were very similar to what your budget is. And very hands-on as well on that situation.
Okay, I'm, uh, I'm gonna follow up with that. What, what research have you done on Bel Air Beach?
Well, I've, I've read about, uh, as much as I can about each of you. I've read about what some of the priorities are. I've read about some of the recent challenges. Uh, I've read the budget, the, the draft budget, uh, that you considered, you know, the other day. Um, you know, I can talk about what some of those, those issues are that I understand, and in fact, I was gonna ask you some questions later on about them, but, you know, I certainly have, uh, uh, read about and understand about West Bay Drive, uh, talked about, uh, understand about issues about sea level rise and the state's initiatives on vulnerability assessment, but also the tremendous amount of grant funding that's available. Uh, read about your issues about, your concerns about beach remonishment, uh, concerns about CRS rating improvements. Um, those are some of the things that I've read. I've read about, uh, the great recreational opportunities that you have covering the full breadth of, uh, of, of citizen interests, and, uh, that's very impressive.
Thank you very much. Glenn Gunn.
I'm looking at your experience in King William County, and you, you emphasize how you reduce the county budget, the county general fund tax rates. You say you looked through our budget. One of the things I would be a big proponent of is bringing someone in who's worked in other counties and municipalities, who had the opportunity to work with our people's budgets and how they analyze that. You took a quick look at our budget, did anything stand out? Where, where do you look? Where would you go to in a budget to, uh, to get the biggest return on the time you spend analyzing the budget?
I, you know, I, that didn't come through all that clear, but I think you were saying, "Where would I go to find the additional funds that we would need to accomplish what your vision is?" Is that the sense of...
Well, more so, where would you look at our budget to, to trim excess fat? And I use that term very poorly, to trim areas that might, uh, have a lower priority than others. What, are there particular areas of the budget that you would focus in on for the biggest return on the time you spend analyzing the budget?
Well, you, I, I did, you know, I probably don't know enough about, about the city at this stage. Um, I, nothing jumped out at me as I, I read every single line of the budget. I didn't see any, I didn't see anything to me that, that spoke of waste. Uh, I'm, I'm sure there were tough decisions that, that you had to make. Um, and I'm sure that, you know, to do the, some of the things that you'd like to do, it's gonna take outside grant and appropriation funding. And, uh, I'm up to that challenge.
Thank you.
Mike Sabal. Uh, yeah, I, I read through and I'm looking at parasailing, especially groundwater, thinking about those times. I mean, I guess there's lawsuits right now with cancer in that water. Um, but can you provide an example of a time when you've had to implement a controversial policy decision, and how did you handle the public reaction?
Well, we, you know, we, it's wonderful, we get to operate, operate in the, the public, um, the public forum, and so you, you, when you see a project like that, or an effort or a need that you know is gonna be controversial, um, you lay out, uh, a path forward for the council to consider, for the citizens to offer input on, and, uh, you start with developing what that plan of moving through this difficult problem will be. Um, and, uh, the frequency and the specifics of, uh, when we will get together and, and have presentations and have input and have discussions, and when we'll come back with, uh, with responses to, uh, things that maybe are more challenging to, to work through. Uh, and you work through the process from, from start to finish. But for us, for something that's challenging, that can easily take a number of meetings, can take a number of months, in fact, but that's the way it's supposed to be done, uh, because these issues are, are not easy. Uh, most of the decisions that, you know, difficult decisions that I've gotten to deal with over the years, uh, there are six good reasons to do it one way, and there are five and a half good reasons to do it the other way. And, uh, so they, that's the nature of many of the things that we deal with. And so our job is to work through, uh, the best that we can with tremendous input and cooperation from the council and the citizens to, uh, to forge that best plan that meets the greatest need.
Okay, thank you. Leslie?
How would you, um, consider reaching out to the residents of Bel Air Beach and then following them in the city process?
Well, I would, I would think the, uh, the most appropriate way would be, as I mentioned, that we'll have a number of initiatives, including the, the budget. Um, we'll have a number of challenges and problems that we need to work through, and so I would build into my presentations to you, um, how we would handle, uh, public information, public input. Um, and so, because I think it's, it's easier for, for citizens to talk about particular problems, particular concerns, something that's concrete to deal with. That's, that's a, that's a very productive way to do it. Now, I have also, in communities where, where I have worked, um, I have also visited each of the neighborhood associations on a regular basis, on their time, on their schedule, um, uh, in the evenings, on the weekends, to, uh, to get input, to get ideas, uh, to get concerns of things that we need to be thinking about, to focus out. Um, and that's been really helpful, and I've been very honest and open in terms of, uh, you know, what I know at the time and, uh, what I know might be possible, and, um, take their comments and concerns and requests to heart and bring them back to you, um, in a, in a number of forums that we, uh, would move through and address and solve and, uh, put better systems in place.
Thank you.
All right, this will be the last question. We're gonna run a couple of minutes over because we started a couple of minutes late. So, Lloyd Roberts.
Hey, Ken, Lloyd again. So, I see you have a, a lot of experience in the public works arena. Um, could you share with us, um, kind of drilling down a little bit, what, what, um, challenges you've had, experiences you've had with regards to, um, roads and stormwater systems? In our small town that we have here, that's, that's probably one of the, um, couple of the bigger projects that we are challenged with. So, both roads and stormwater systems, your experience in those areas?
Um, good, good question. Well, in my years, I have been, uh, in charge of six public works operations, uh, many of them in Florida, and of course, when you're in Florida, you're, in many other places, you're dealing with stormwater. It's absolutely essential. Um, and stormwater, it's on the march here in Florida. We're very progressive in Florida. The state's very progressive in terms of what they require of, from us as municipality in terms of stormwater. Um, it's truly important in terms of addressing the, the concerns that, that happen with, with stormwater events. Uh, I have a lot of experience doing that, uh, very, very experienced at developing stormwater master plans, um, and, um, securing the funding it takes to implement the capital projects and other projects, um, uh, to, uh, that it takes to implement those stormwater master plans and improve the, uh, the flooding situation and protect our residents and their property. Um, and, uh, there is more grant money out now in Florida and at the federal level than there ever has been, so there's great opportunity, especially in stormwater. Um, I'm very strong in, in, you know, in, in roads and bridges. In fact, I, I, early in my career, I didn't put it down, um, after serving as a county highway superintendent, uh, in charge of all the roads for a county east of Albany, New York, um, I, uh, I went to Cornell University and I ran their local roads program, and I trained public works directors and city engineers, county engineers, and how to, uh, design, build, maintain, uh, roads and streets. Um, so I know that material backwards and forwards.
Thank you, Ken.
All right, Mr. Griffin, uh, we appreciate your interest in the city manager position, uh, and it was very nice, uh, to meet you tonight. I'm sorry we couldn't see you on video, but, uh, but that's okay. Um, we're out of time.
I'll, I'll send, uh, I'll send Patty a picture.
So, we're out of time, and, uh, we're gonna terminate this call now, and, uh, someone will contact you tomorrow and let you know, uh, what our decision was.
All right, thank you. I, I very much enjoyed talking with each of you. Thank you so much for all your time tonight.
All right, have, have a good night.
Thank you for...
You, too.
I didn't think of it. It's very funny. Yep. We got a mayor Andy Tack expert.
Yeah, that's all.
Can you hook up my printer?
She'd be in the job description.
Absolutely.
All right, well, let's, uh, let's talk about Mr. Griffin for about 10 minutes, and then we'll take a, a short break, and then we'll come back and we'll, uh, begin discussion of all, all the candidates. Remember, we're only discussing what we, about the person we just interviewed. Uh, Lloyd?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad I asked that last question because, um, and this is not to throw down on anybody, but, um, the previous city manager, when I would ask questions about, like, the master stormwater, and that, so, well, why are we doing it this way? Well, because the engineer gave it to us. This guy would be asking lots of questions when we get things like that to come in. From his experience and knowledge base, that could be invaluable.
I agree. I agree. Uh, Leslie?
Um, I, I don't know. His experience seemed much more engineering-wise than city manager-wise, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. Any other comments?
No.
Mike?
You know, it's cited off your background, but I quite millions worked with these guys. Um, in the military, he has two schools here, uh, graduate of the Kennedy School of Government Executive Program over at Harvard, and then the Cornell Executive Program. Those are where we center top people. We, you know, send these, you know, future, called SESs or generals through those schools. So, that's a, that's a pretty good highlight. But what stuck out with me was, in all my time with city, you know, city here, council member, we've always had to push, prod, ask questions, and so, and everything, "Why didn't you ask that? I mean, you nailed it." You know, this is the person that will ask the questions. But more importantly, he says, "You build a process, you work, you work the process," and he would brief the council, who've always said, said, "You should be bringing us the solutions. We're not here to do your work." I mean, Glenn's coming in daily, it's like, "No, no, 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 we gotta work the strategic plan, did you look at this, this? This is the type of person that will bring us a solution." You know, we have limited hours here, we work, we're in their jobs as well. So, bring us the solution, don't bring us the problem, and this sounds like the person that will bring the solution.
I like that. It sounded like, uh, what he would do is a lot different than what we've been doing. In other words, I've done all the research, here are your options, you know?
Right, I brief you.
Counsel, please direct me, which way would you like me to go? They're both awesome, aw- awesome paths, but, uh, that's kind of what I envisioned with, with, uh, with Mr. Griffin. Vice Mayor?
If you, if you look at his background, very heavy engineering, licensed professional engineer, that sort of thing. If you look at his experience, he's worked in managers' jobs in counties and that sort of thing, but what you probably don't appreciate is that in his engineering work, he's working in teams, and, you know, that's a, a very collaborative process, very technically oriented, and you need to bring people on board with ideas and, you know, it, it's fact-based kind of stuff. At the end of the day, you make the best decision you can based on, on that sort of thing. With that said, you know, with his heavy background in engineering, what you, what you, what you cannot, uh, exclude is that this guy's got a PhD in leadership management, okay? It, from my engineering background is you don't have the geeks managing the geeks, okay? That was, that was what I learned.
I'll follow up on that.
My aeronautic engineering background, and this guy obviously took it to the next level and understands, you know, what, what's important, getting people to work in teams, what motivates them, that sort of thing, so. With respect to our infrastructure problems, this guy could be the man of the hour, right?
I agree.
And, uh, even if, even if he didn't come on board long-term, because as, as Randy touched on down there, you know, the, the average term of a city manager, this guy brings a lot of experience and a lot of know-how that we can capitalize on in the next couple of years. And not only that, but I'm assuming with all this engineering work and with public utilities in the St. Peter, he's bringing his role down with him. He has a network, and he has the contacts that could, the contacts that can really... And even if, even if he didn't come on board long-term, because as Randy touched on down there, you know, the average term of a city manager, this guy brings a lot of experience and a lot of know-how that we can capitalize on in the next couple of years. And not only that, but I'm assuming with all his engineering work and with public utilities in the St. Peter, he's bringing his role with him. He has a network and he has the contacts that can, the contacts that can really move some of our projects forward, deep things through and stuff. And that's what I see just.
I agree with you 100%. I think if this council wants to fast-track our infrastructure capital improvements, this is the way, that's probably a good route to go as far as personality-wise and how he would interact with residents. I don't know. I think I would have to definitely see you in a second interview and give a feel for that. But for the most part, he seemed personal and was easy to talk to, seemed to have the right answers. And I wouldn't mind bringing him back for a second interview.
I wish we could have seen him. So he was at a disadvantage, but we couldn't see.
Sometimes that's better. If I could follow up with Vice Mayor, there's something that really stuck to me. Professorships with five major colleges and universities since 1988. Okay, he's taught grad courses. Yes, his words, he's not a hard engineer. In leadership and management, international studies, public administration, and there's the checkpoint, advanced stats. But he co-developed a new master's degree program in engineering management for the University of Mississippi. By now, he, yeah, working in engineering, I mean, I got my MS in software engineering. You have the hard engineers. Engineering management's for the MBA student. This is the type of person that puts things together, looks at funding. They do engineering by budgets, contracts, instead of slide rules and hard calc.
My question goes back to, would he come here and go, and, oh, I have nothing to, I have nothing to do. That's my fear, is that it's, our problems seem large to us, to this guy. This is a walk-in party, it seems like, but I also worry about someone.
We nabbed our friend.
Maybe you can.
A million-dollar contract. Yeah, millions, no problem.
All right, any other comments before we take a short break? Now, let's take, I'd say we take 10 minutes. If everybody found a stretch of their legs and legal with the crowd.
Legal with the crowd?
All right. All right, everybody ready? Stand up.
And remember, you were talking about.
I was leading him into scratching. Almost like one of those Japanese auto manufacturers.
I'm good. Yeah. All right, the meeting is back in progress. Let's just say 10 till 8.
Okay.
All right, we're back. And before we begin discussions, I'm going to need a motion to select two of the four candidates for in-person interviews. Someone?
Wait, wait.
I'm going to, not the names, I'm just going to need a motion to actually move forward with this so that we can vote.
I'd like to make a motion.
We're not voting immediately, but this is going to open up discussions.
I'd like to make a motion to move forward on voting on two progressives to the next level of interviews.
Motion made by Mike Zabel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roberts, Mike Zabel, you have the floor.
I feel that we have reviewed, first of all, we've taken into consideration the scoring and the word from our citizens. We've listened to their concerns, we've listened to their inputs on all the candidates. We have then thoroughly investigated ourselves by reviewing their packages that we asked them to submit and their resumes. And finally, we have talked to them via Skype or the phone to get a better feeling for them, asking them individual questions.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to comment? Flinka?
You're probably going to ask for citizens, but we're fortunate, we've got two of our citizens advisory committee members here. And they gave us the initial list and they listened to the candidates like we did, so I hope we can.
After we do this one round, then we're going to the citizens.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I'll vote, so.
Leslie?
Anyone else can agree with what Mike said?
Okay. Roberts? Well, in that case, let's take it to the citizens. Who would like to speak? Yes, sir. Please come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and let's hear what you have to say. We'll make it hot if it's not.
Well, if you all can hear me, okay?
I don't think the citizens can hear you.
Yeah, we need to hear.
I'm sorry about that.
Are the citizens listening?
I hope so.
Okay, yes, it's hot. Perfect. We're building 437, 20 seconds from. And I did have the honor of serving on the citizens advisory committee to review all applicants for this position. I think that what we witnessed tonight was proof that we had whittled it down sufficiently to give you some choices that appeared to be meeting all of the requirements, first of all, and secondly, that you feel comfortable talking to them and that they're able to communicate fairly with you all. One of the things that bothers me a little bit about this is the setting of expectations may be, and this is always a problem when you're hiring people, that you are not fair to another. We're setting expectations for them to come into a position where we are expecting a huge return on our investment. And what we've heard tonight, we know that in the past, we haven't gotten everything that we've wanted out of the position before, for one reason or another. And we have a lot of initiatives that we would like to see happen. We finally have city council that can work together along with the mayor and one that can agree on what we need to do and how we should go about getting that done. I don't want to risk the initiatives that you all have and the feeling that you all have, that we can get this done, we can accomplish what we need to for the city, by setting expectations for ourselves and also for the new city manager that we may not be able to make because of the financial constraints we operate the city under. I think the biggest issue we have here is that previously, although we did get some occasional grant money, we have not taken advantage of everything that's out there to the fullest extent, for one reason or another. Either we didn't have the expertise, we didn't have the impetus to do it, or we just didn't have the skill set to do it. So I think if we don't make sure that whoever we bring into this role can get the money from grants, we're setting them up not to be successful in both residents' eyes and the city council's eyes. So I urge you to make sure in the next round of questioning that you get comfortable with their ability to raise funds for grants. So I hope they spend a little more time trying to figure out from what they say, whether they feel they can do this and are willing to set the tone for getting this done and allowing themselves to be successful. I wouldn't mind hearing you tell them that the way to be successful in the city manager role is to make sure that you get enough grant money to make the city successful in getting everything the residents need to meet the needs that we're going to have over the next five years. So thank you all for doing this job. It's immense and it's hard. You set the tone for us and we were able to validate the credentials and the historical background of most of these people. But until you've actually talked to them one-on-one, and I've noticed that you all respond very, very well and you get the positive feedback you're looking for. It's human nature, we all do that. And those are the type of people that will be able to meet your needs as well, as needs of the city, because they can respond appropriately. Now, can they do the job? Is the other half of it? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gobler. I appreciate your input. Anyone else? No? Okay, we're back to the council. Any comments? Anyone? Okay, go ahead.
I'll address the grant issue.
The what?
The grants.
Okay.
Okay, the corporate memory for a council, three councils. This was a, grants was an issue brought by the original, when Joey came in, I came in, Marty and Nick, that was one of our top priorities. The city needs to engage positively and proactively on grants. Seek grants, don't let it just fall into our lap. Proactively go out there and beat the bush. We said, we want somebody designated as a grant manager. We need a grant policy, okay? So at the end of three councils later, what do we have? We have a park and rec grant for $400,000 and we were going to be obligated to $200,000. So that was the universe based on the experience level we had in house, park and recs. And we know how to get that. Well, it obligated us for 25 years and gave us things that we didn't think we needed and you couldn't get rid of if you wanted to in those 25 years. And we didn't know what the recurring cost was to support those things. So we heard from one guy, never stop asking for the money. And it sounds to me, some of these people have expertise in seeking out grants. If you look at Mr. Griffin's experience, part of the mindset in good engineering work these days is they will tell you where to go and get the money. And you can write into the RFP and the specifications for the RFP of, you will help us write the grant work or grant application for next year. So it sounds to me like he has some experience there. Now, if you're looking for a generalist, I think Daniels is our guy. He had all the right things. If you're looking for a laser-focused, you're an infrastructure guy, Griffin's your guy. So, I mean, these are just things to think about, that as far as expectations go, I think, and we set the expectations, but we can, again, we can manage that kind of stuff. Part of that's going to be the salary thing, and that's part of the discussion we need to have here, is these guys are looking for more money right now than what our salary range is. Are we willing to make the commitment to bring in-house the expertise we think we need at the time? Are we going to get a return on that kind of investment? So I'm just throwing, shut up there for discussion.
Okay, and talking about salaries, I did call the mayor of Madera. And I asked him, okay, what was Daniels making? And he said he was making $135 and he received a $500 a month car allowance. And I said, do you think that that was fair? And he said, I actually thought it was too much. And then I said, well, where do you think that Beller Beach stands? Whenever we're much simpler, we don't have the infrastructure, we don't have the commerce. We're, obviously, we have difficult problems we have to manage. But they're not, it's not to the level of complexity that most municipalities have. And he didn't give me a straightforward answer, but he told me, he believed that Beller Beach should be able to hire within the budget that we allotted. So for somebody, for either one of these guys, I think that if they even looked at our budget, and I think they both said that they did, they know, they know what we're getting ready to do. And, you know, we may have to, we may have to allow for some widower to make something happen, but I was, I was impressed with both and I think that my decision is right. So any other comments?
I just have a question. Did Mr., and I apologize, I didn't bring the application that they had submitted. Did Mr. Griffin list what his current salary is?
No, he did not. No.
And we know Mr. Daniels is not working right now.
That's correct.
One thing I would like to clarify is, are we comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges? Because we're talking about this, you said $135 down in Beller Beach, yes. So here's the budget information on our outgoing city manager, okay? The adopted budget, salaries, wages for city manager was $101,000, right? But by the time you add in all the allowances, medical care, insurance, workers comp, that number was at $138,000. The proposed budget for next year is up to $142,000. So that's all I wanted to clarify, when he says $135,000, is that bottom line off?
I think that was his salary, it did not include the.
Workman's talk, but that's not part of the salary. Yeah. That's an expense that we have to pay.
Exactly.
Right.
Any other comments? Should we take it to a vote?
Sure.
Yes.
All right, Patty, would you mind passing out the ballots, please?
And as you receive these ballots, there is a place for your name and signature. Please fill out that field.
Personally, I think we're fortunate, the way we can win. I think we only lost one potential candidate, that's a select item, John, I think, who we interviewed. I think we're fortunate with the quality of the final candidate, so you have to choose one.
I agree. I can run.
Okay, and this is in no particular order, okay? Vice Mayor Gunn, Mr. Griffin and Mr. Daniels. Mayor Gaddis, Mr. Griffin and Mr. Daniels. Councilmember Roberts, Mr. Griffin and Mr. Daniels. Councilmember Notaro, Mr. Cavalli and Mr. Daniels. Councilmember Banker, Mr. Reifler, I'm sorry, Reeffler. And that was all on his ballot. And Councilmember Zabel, Mr. Griffin and Mr. Daniels.
Okay, so the.
You have the one that he did, right?
It was read into the record. It was Mr. Cavalli, I mean, Mr. Reeffler was his only.
Okay, so the tally is Griffin for, Cavalli one, Reeffler one, and Daniels.
Councilmember Banker, Mr. Reifler, I'm sorry, Reeffler. And that was all on his ballot. And Councilmember Zabel, Mr. Griffin, and Mr. Daniels.
Okay, so the.
You have the one, you have the one that he did, right?
It was read into the record, it was Mr. Cavalli, I mean, Mr. Reeffler was his only.
Okay, so the tally is Griffin for, Cavalli one, Reeffler one, and Daniels five. So the top two are Daniels and Griffin. Patty, tomorrow, would you please notify all four candidates that the selections made? And I'll contact you tomorrow and we'll see about scheduling for the interviews of the top two candidates initially, before we end this and get out of here. Is there any particular day next week that's good for everyone? And then I'll have Patty survey Banker and Shirley and we'll see if the stars can align.
This is the 10th evening, are we talking about five or six?
This would be, I mean, we can do five or six.
Thursday would be good for me, the 28th. Or Monday, the 25th.
And it is good.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I say something? Next week, we're talking, and don't forget, next week is a big C, right?
A big C is, will be in the morning though.
Okay, so we won't?
Well, this will be.
All right.
All right.
I'm open.
Any night.
Any night.
Okay. Okay. You're open.
Thursday's Friday, too.
Okay, that's two for Thursday. Just double check and make sure that nothing is conflicting here.
Thank you, Randy.
I would like to have all seven councilmen hearing that at night. I can't, I get my hair not as good. Okay, Thursday is then. Let's shoot for Thursday and start with, with Banker and Shirley and see if they're okay with Thursday and if that works, then notify the candidates that Thursday is.
6:00 P.M.?
6:00 P.M. will be fine and we'll interview them and then we'll have.
Mayor, a few things I wish to raise. One, my entire firm will be in Bonita Springs on Thursday for the Florida Municipal Attorneys Association. It's the annual continuing education conference on what we do. Based on how tonight went, I don't know that the city attorney presence is critical. If need be, I maybe could drive back. I just want to check if, you know, if it's the will of the council that the city attorney's office be present for that meeting or not.
Well.
Do you want to zoom in?
I could zoom in.
Okay, that would work.
I could zoom in, I could certainly zoom in.
We can figure out how this works.
I would not feel comfortable doing, having those interviews and voting without you.
Understood. I will figure out a way to make myself available during that time. The second thing I wish to note that other councils have considered, I don't know if you folks have specifically addressed this, one of your candidates is from out of region. You're setting up in-person interviews with hopes that they are here. Is it the desire of this body if they ask as far as subsidizing that cost at all? I know in some communities, it's sort of been a given, and in other communities, it's been a point of contention. And rather than put your staff in the position of hemming and hawing onto this short timeline, I think it'd be best that this council decided how, if at all, wishes to address that issue.
Are you recommending paid mileage?
I'm not making a recommendation either way. Some places have said, we'll subsidize a plane ticket up to X or mileage up to, or mileage if you drive. Others have, you know, said whether or not they would contribute to the cost of accommodations. It's really at your discretion, but I did want to sensitize you to that issue in case the question is presented.
I believe that.
I don't, I don't recall particularly where the gentleman is, I think it was the Carolinas.
The other one is in Jupiter.
Oh, they're both, they're both here, okay. They're both of Florida.
Close enough.
Okay, I misunderstood, I thought the gentleman in Tampa might have been out of state, so it's sort of less relevant in that regard. I think that's a reasonable ask, I thought somebody was coming from out of state, out of state.
How far is Jupiter?
Four hours, four to five hours. Great dad joke, but roughly four to five hours.
Mileage plus hotel.
Light years.
No, just thinking out loud with that, it's, we're talking, we're starting this meeting at, I guess, 6:00, we finish at 8:00. Recommend, I mean, for safety, see about mileage and a hotel in that case. So it's not garden back at 8:00, getting home at midnight.
Have you priced hotels lately in this area?
Yeah, yeah.
Or you can stay at the mayor's house.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look into that. Okay, so what I would do, Patty, whenever you contact them, by the way, was, did we pick 6:00 or 5:00?
6:00.
Everybody good with 5:00? Cause I always come in earlier and that alleviates some of that issue with the late night driving and. We're on tight line here.
5:00.
So let's treat it like we're on tight line. And then if you receive some pushback, just give me a call and we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Okay, any other concerns?
No, none from me, thank you.
Okay, Greg?
Issues like that, is there something we will discuss after the next interview? I mean, is that a concern, having the guy who's a geo bachelor probably, is that how he managed the Madera?
Did what?
Daniels is the guy we're talking about, he lives in Jupiter, right?
Yes.
So when he was the city manager in Madera, was he a geo bachelor? Obviously, he wasn't going back before 300.
I believe he, he has a permanent residence in Jupiter, but he was renting out in Madera. And I think his goal is to come, I think he even said it in the interview, his goal was to come back to the west coast here.
Is that a requirement?
No, John, it's not.
I mean, limited places here in Bellard Beach.
And the salary discussion, that will be further after?
Yeah, I believe that's, that's what we'll have to do. We.
Those things can also be, pending the parties' respective positions, those things can also be negotiated as part of the ultimate contract entered into. I've seen communities say, you know, no further than a X-mile radius, something reasonable that captures basically the entire county and a little bit of the periphery so that, you know, in the event of emergency response. Again, that's negotiated. If that, if the person's not willing to negotiate that term, that's something else, but.
Currently, the interim city manager gets a car allowance. Okay, other than that, I think you deferred to living, right?
Yeah.
Some have made, some have placed that. But living or, or alternatively, you know, we'll subsidize up to this radius.
That's probably, once we go through the interview and vote process, we'll have to have another meeting, we'll call them in and we'll work through the negotiations. I don't have anything else. I think we, I think we did a great job and I appreciate everyone's time and I know it's very trying and I appreciate all the work of the citizens advisory committee and I appreciate everyone who came tonight to, to watch all of this take place. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make one comment, can you?
Sure.
Similar to like, we're making a decision for the attorney, the city attorney, I thought both of those options were terrific. I think the four that we interviewed tonight, also very good. I'm just going to say, I know Kyle's going to be disappointed, but I really feel like in the long run, this is going to be best for him. I think he's going to get an opportunity to work with and for a professional city manager. He's going to learn from that and that's going to be good for him. So I hope that's the way he looks at it.
I agree and I believe we received some correspondence about that today and that he has potential and we don't want to lose him, but.
I would also say he's not overkill at all.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay, so now, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Checking. Okay, all in there?
Aye.
Aye. Any others? All right, I didn't think so. Good night, everyone.
Thank you very much for everything you're sharing.
I'm going to make a sunset.